Those four dates and the minutes as in the packet are approved unanimously. All right, moving through our regular agenda items, which is start with the planning zoning board application. Is there any comments about we have a, is this for a member or for an alternate?
This is for an alternate.
For an alternate, this is an alternate position. All right.
Did we lose somebody?
Yes.
We lost someone.
Okay, my only thoughts, and the application was great for a building. If her husband be in with a building, I don't know whether it's building within Mexico Beach at this time or not. And may not be a problem at all with that, but it's a concern.
Everyone else that's an alternate or a voting member, they're staying where they're at, is that right?
The way that it's set up is we have the five members and then we have the two alternates. The member that left, when she left, one of the alternates automatically steps in.
Who is that alternate?
The alternate is, it's Venus mom, Lorraine.
Okay, okay, so and who is the other alternate? That's Joe Bush. Joe Bush, okay, so he's Jim, he's remaining an alternate.
Correct.
Okay. And the alternates don't vote?
No, but they're the automatic people that step in once another number steps out.
Okay.
Do they stay with them if some's not, somebody's not making this office sit in?
Yes, the alternates do sit in if somebody's, if someone's absent. And keeping in mind, you know, for a couple, three meetings, when the whole COVID thing kicked off, we had alternates that were sitting in and making votes originally.
So if, if, if they sit in to take the place of a voting member, they get to vote?
Correct.
All right, assuming we obviously only have one application.
Yes.
Okay. All right, further comments or motion? For Ms. Miller, for all Ms. Miller? She has an interest and we have an opening. I'm, I'm good with, I don't know her personally, but that's okay too.
I think she lives, used to live in Fifth and Fulton, or now they build a house in Fulton, or I just remember, like I don't know. But that's where she built a house in Fulton. She used to live in Fifth and, or somewhere around that somewhere. I don't, nobody else.
Well, it's been difficult, she, she really got the knowledge to take the bill. You gonna vote?
Yeah, or you want to go, I'm gonna vote, you accept.
I say.
A motion, a statement for acceptance, an alternate, any further comments and/or discussion? Call the row please.
Mayor Hattie?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Keeg?
Yes.
Okay. Please let Ms. Miller know, I assume she's not here. Oh, I saw, oh my goodness.
There you go.
Well, thank you for applying and welcome to the planning zoning board.
Thank you.
Nice to, nice to. We're masked up, it's hard to recognize who's who, not that I, I might have seen you and not known. Thank you for, thank you for having an interest. Uh. All right, ordinance seven forty-seven is our second item. That is for the ordinance that we discussed at the last meeting. And we are now ready to authorize, or not authorize, but may put the ordinance on book. It defines the sale of the, or not the sale, but the location and all of the, what it does authorize a sale and the location of the property up in the business. Do I have a motion to read ordinance seven forty-seven?
If I could, there's first, there's I think two changes to summarize. Compared to the version for first reading today, we have attached the exhibit that shows the contract that we have entered into with pharmacy and Mario signed that contract now. And the, the other change is that originally the ordinance had language about attempting to negotiate a better deal. We just eliminated that because we've already entered this contract. We know what the terms are, that you all approved the basic terms last meeting, so those are things.
Okay. Make a motion, re-read ordinance seven forty-seven by power.
Second.
Motion second, any comments? Ms. Lindsay, please do so.
An ordinance of the city of Mexico Beach, Florida, authorizing the sale of the Civic Center property and providing immediate effective date.
Now, the fact that this is an ordinance, you have on here a motion to adopt, can we, can we move forward with adoption?
Yes, we've already run the notice in the newspaper and you may adopt today if you'd like. And actually, it would be very helpful to stay on schedule for the sale.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance seven forty-seven?
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance seven forty-seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt. Again, any comments, if you would, Lindsay, please call the row.
Mayor Hattie?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Keeg?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, number three is the cottages at Paradise Cove. I think everyone is aware, this is one of those that we've had for a couple meetings. Is there any, Nick, or you, can you sort of enlighten us to whatever, or whoever might want to take the lead here?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Before I open the public hearing, I'll at least tell us, or should I make it part of the public hearing? Let me open the public hearing, that's all.
The reason why you're seeing this proposal before you again, last meeting, we had a lengthy conversation on it and at the end of that conversation, we did not either approve or deny it. We just kind of, we had a motion that didn't pass and left it there. Primarily the reason why it's on your agenda today is we want to get a, a true approval or denial or approval of conditions and not leave it lingering sometimes if there's not an actual motion that passes. We have more complications in the future than we'd like. So we're going to do another hearing on the project. So staff will be based in description of the project and we'll hear from the audience and have a vote.
All right, I think for council purposes, there any reason to rehash, I mean, we all know what the project is. I'm going to open the public hearing now for those that may be here that want to speak on the seven hundred fifteen street cottages at Paradise Cove. Your friend?
Hi.
Hey.
I'm Pamela Chetan, who's at one oh eight Paradise Cove Boulevard in Mexico Beach. One of the original homes on this property y'all heard from last time I spoke. I just had a couple of other key points because I'm still perplexed in as much, a couple of things. So what we've got now is, we know the flood plain has changed. Just, just a couple of clarification points. The engineering that was determined to bring us here today and, and that was all done pre hurricane Michael. Is that clear?
I, I believe that's correct, but I'm not in a position to answer.
I think I can address that. I think this is preliminary flood approval. So when we're talking about engineering right now, we're approving the layout. The engineering, the actual study of the flood plain, looking at the stormwater comes after preliminary flood approval. So we're, but we're at the preliminary flood approval stage right now. We're approving a layout based on twenty-eight lots and twelve townhomes, which would be a total of forty units. Does that?
Okay, so I didn't get an answer, I got that, that applies because.
The answer is, is we're not finished with engineering yet. This is the first step to get us to the next step, but actually engineering this piece of property.
Okay, and I guess my next question would be, if the preliminary plat is approved, what does this allow?
Allows what you see. Designing the subdivision.
It allows what you see on the map.
I got you. So my concern once again is that the flood plain level has changed post hurricane Michael. The water and, and what the prediction is of the flood plain has gone up to a peak. My house, two houses on the street can no longer be raised, they exist. So all I'm trying to do is to find out, we, we don't want to get flooded. Because now if it goes up, if, if the flood plain is correct, it goes up and we get flooded, we're under water. So that, that's just my concern. And I don't know any other avenue to come to except for city council. And we're not saying, or trying to restrict or deny anyone from building on that land, that's not it. But there ought to be a way to just protect the current property because we cannot elevate it.
If you would please, at the last meeting, at the last meeting, it was stated that the flood plain engineering would have to account for those properties that are but this property. So in the preliminary plat, which does not address engineered flood plain elevation, it is assured to us that just by approving the preliminary plat does not relieve this property from following the flood plain rules, which include the properties that you're concerned about. But, but more in depth, so that's what we talked about, I think rather extensively at the last meeting, that all of the properties surrounding this property are included in the survey. Which would include the street that you are justifiably concerned with.
And then one other thing that was brought to my attention, and y'all may be able to shed some light on this. I understand the city in the future wants to change the storm drainage. And whereas we now have one canal coming headed towards our area, at that juncture, we will have two. So when I look at the future desires of the city changing that plus this, that's why I'm back here today. I'm just wanting to find out, you know, what recourse, if, if, if things break bad, what, I mean, why couldn't we just once again follow the world, current rules of development? If I was to build a brand new house, I would have to undergo the brand new laws and resubmit plans. Even if I did it pre hurricane Michael, I'd have to resubmit them. That's all I'm saying is, I would like for any development to do their due diligence the same way I would have to if I was going to put up a new.
Well, you're implying that they're not, that they're not having to do that.
I, I'm just, I'm just asking, I, that's all I, I'm trying to do is ask.
But they, they, they will be held to the current standards. Just like someone building a new house.
Okay. That's good to know, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Michael Guy, I'm at one ten Paradise Cove. But I was on vacation, ten days, when y'all had the last meeting for the preliminary plat. And wasn't able to attend, I did try to monitor it and sorry, I just learned about this just prior to leaving on that vacation, it didn't seem like it was advertised or there was any signage or anything. So I hadn't had a lot of time to do any research on it. And I'll say it again, I've been in law enforcement for over twenty years, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a developer, I don't know much about that side of it, but I do know how to research and I know almost that I can scratch my head. There was a few issues that I overheard and I heard her speaking and I heard y'all address some of those issues. But the, the first question was, when the preliminary plat is approved, would that allow site work prior to DEP, water management, any of that? Will there be any dirt moved until that happens? No? Okay, so the, the other concern is, I, I believe that I'm the last purchase in Paradise Cove subdivision. There may be one since then, but I purchased my lot in twenty eighteen, a few months before hurricane Michael. And I've been in the drafting and permitting and all those stages since then, so it's been drawn out. But when I purchased my lot, I purchased it through Harmon Realty, which is the same family that developed Paradise Cove Boulevard. There was a homeowners association that was created and recorded with the Department of State and is with the, the Bay County Clerk of Court, it's recorded with them. This new plat for the cottages shows driveways coming into Paradise Cove Boulevard. Is that legal with a, with a homeowners association that owns Paradise Cove Boulevard?
Nick, you addressed that at the last meeting.
Last meeting, I thought we concluded that Paradise Cove Boulevard has been dedicated to the city and was being maintained by the city. If it hadn't, and that was a private road, it'd be a problem. But everything we heard last time was that the city's maintaining it and taking over that road.
Okay, so when did that occur?
Don't know, I, I can check the plat, it may have been done on the plat, it sounded like it may, but it could have occurred later.
And the reason I ask is, when I purchased my lot, my deed is covenant restricted. I purchased it in twenty eighteen. I had to sign a homeowners association disclosure when I purchased my lot, that there was an active homeowners association. In my research, I could not find anything in the Department of State records or Bay County Clerk of Court where that homeowners association was dissolved. So that's the, that's a main question. If the preliminary plat is approved, how is that being done legally with no record of that being dissolved? Would that be an active homeowners association? Because in the Paradise Cove Boulevard subdivision, that street is included in the plat that's provided and recorded.
So the Paradise Cove plat, I'm looking at it in the dedication statement, and that's where you handle transfers of title and maintenance. They must say that the Paradise Cove Boulevard is dedicated to the public, which is the city. Staff, I think, told us, the city's been maintaining that road, so it's a normal public road now. Like I said, if it had been maintained as a private road that the city wasn't maintaining, it wouldn't, it would not make sense to add more driveways to it, but it's a regular city road.
But I believe under HOA rules, any common area, any part of a homeowners association has to be transferred to a government entity or to the owners within the homeowners association by a vote from the members of that homeowner association, did that occur? And my question ultimately is, is it legal for those driveways to, to access Paradise Cove Boulevard without that documentation? I don't, I don't see where that's legal. I don't know where that, that change over to the city occurred legally.
The transfer happened in the, in the plat, in the dedication. You will occasionally see a deed that follows that, just to confirm the transfer, but not every time.
But you didn't vote on it, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, and I'll, and when I came in and purchased my property, and I believe I was the latest one.
Yeah, we got the same situation.
Homeowners Association paperwork. And I would be safe to say that no one on that street is aware that there is not a homeowners association anymore.
What'd you say, Mario?
The, the road was plotted in the original development, I mean, before these lots ever sold, that road was dedicated to the city.
October twenty seventh, two thousand third, two thousand three.
So it's been that way since the beginning. If there's an HOA, the HOA governs the, like you said, the common land, the stormwater, the, you know, the components that are common to them, but I don't know what those are without looking at their HOA.
Well, the dedication calls out a passive park area that the association would maintain, doesn't say that on the board. I haven't looked at the homeowners association documents, they're probably online, I can look at them, but they generally occur, they're filed usually after the plats, so they're all, the plat lays the basic groundwork the association has to have.
Well, how much trouble could the city get in if we approve something and then they sue us? Is that, I mean, should we look at it, what do you think?
It's never pleasant to be sued, but everything that occurs is that that road is a regular public city road.
Don't you think it'd be good to check though, just to make sure?
Well, the fact that he's telling us that it's a regular public road, I don't, I don't know that there's any, anything on the road itself that, that would risk anything to the city on the road.
And you, and you found, and you found something in, on the paper that says that that road had been deeded to Mexico Beach?
It's the original two thousand three plat, it dedicated the road to the public, in this case, it's the city to maintain and to use.
But it is reported in that it has been transferred to the city.
That, that's right in the plat.
Transfer might be the wrong word, when the plat's recorded, is dedicated right then. It never was done something different and then later transferred. It was done at the date the plat was recorded.
Well, I've got a copy of the plat, I didn't see that.
Okay, I don't, I'm not looking at it either, I'm looking at, I'm listening to what.
And I'll, I'll, I'll back up, I'm not opposed as, as a resident there, I'm not opposed to development. It sounds like that, but I'm not opposed to development at all, at all. What I'm opposed to is when I purchased that property, I have three kids that are thirteen and under. I purchased that selectively because it's a cul-de-sac road and it's low traffic. I see where it says low density, but the units that I'm seeing on the proposed plat is not low density. I purchased it so my kids can play in the road and not get run over, not get killed. And what I see coming, if it is done the way it is proposed, is the size of those residences, the size of those lots, it, it is going to be a weekend warrior situation for people who rent or sublease or lease out or, and I'm not sure if that's been addressed, a lot of the homeowners association rules do address that, but there's going to be traffic, there's going to be vehicles parked in the road, there's going to be boat trailers, there's going to be everything. And the stormwater that's created when that lot is leveled, that stormwater is a concern, not so much for me, but for the, the people that are already developed at grade level. It's easy to say in engineering, it's during engineering that that's not going to occur. But it, it, our, our homeowners association, where we were at, was engineered as well and it flooded. So I'm guessing Duver is handling the engineering with this new development. Is there any other engineering firm that has looked at it to fact check that?
Well, I think that's what we just spoke about, this is preliminary plat, this approves us due to the engineering on the site. So where you're asking for, we haven't even got to yet. This is, this is a step in the process to get us to engineer this site. We have to engineer this site, design it, do the stormwater, have the stormwater permitted, have the stormwater approved per the standards, per Northwest Florida and city standards. Everything that you're asking for is going to be done, but this is a step in the process to get us to that point to look at it.
Okay, I understand, will there be any other engineering firms looking at it other than Duver?
We can't review our own stuff, so the city, it'll be submitted to the city and the city will either conduct an internal review, that'll be their review process, yes.
But Duver is the engineering firm for the city as well, right?
Right, but that's, you can't do that, I mean, by law, you can't review something that you're the city engineering for.
Okay, so will it be reviewed, that's the question.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have another company that does our, an independent review of our land development regulations for sublease.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Are there others? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing, return to the table. For discussion and/or comments. I'll say that I, I, I still am on the, I mean, the guy did what the land development regulation says. I am suggesting again that we, for me to approve or vote to approve, I would, it would have to be that we reduce those nine lots to six lots on the Paradise Cove street, which is the same number of lots that's on the south side of it, or the north side of it. But as far as the, following our land development regulations, he has done so. And in the preliminary plat, we still remember, it's not a, it's not a development order, it's not a final plat approval. We will have ample opportunity to ensure, as will the public, that the requirement for stormwater and all of the concerns that have been voiced today will, will have, those will be addressed as we move forward. But I would like to formally ask that the lots be reduced on Paradise Cove from nine to six.
So I, I, I agree with that. But we actually legally can't say that, right? We can only request that they do that?
You can request.
We can request and say that's what you gotta do, but is that, is that going to get us in conflict with our land development?
What you would do is condition your approval on that change and it would be up to the applicant to say, okay, I'm going to proceed, it's good enough, or challenge approval and say it was too strict.
Well, hopefully he'll agree with that, I, I don't see how he can be reasonable and not agree to that, so.
Well, it may not be completely and right, but we try to keep our neighborhood the same.
Sure.
Greve out, they meet all our LDR, we have LDR for a reason, and, and they've met it, we ought to go by it. But I still agree with him and you, that we should request the, uh, uh, the split on Paradise Cove to be the same as one side road to the other.
The term we usually use is consistency in the neighborhood. And you very rarely will see a case like this where there's a plat that relies on a pre-existing road. They usually build out their own roads, so this is a good example of a time when it, it, it does make sense for you to use your discretion and make some alterations to ensure consistency with the rest of the neighborhood. Because even though it's two separate plats, they're going to share a street, they're going to have the same street addresses.
Okay, say that again, this is a good idea or a good reason why we should change something?
So normally you wouldn't have, you wouldn't tell someone submitting a plat to change their number of lots if they've met their minimum requirements, but in this case, you do have a basis to, to, to condition that change in your approval because of the issue of consistency between the two sides of that street and that, you usually won't see that, usually when there's subdivision that's applied for, they're, they're not going to rely on existing roads, they're going to rely on their own roads. So this is a rare case where it makes sense.
Other comments?
I think it's much too busy, I think it's just going to be a bunch of congestion with all of this. I think it should be dropped lower than just eliminating those three on that one road. I think it's just going to be, uh, much too congested.
Okay.
I got two and three, you can put them here?
Yes.
I got two and five, when the, Mr. Guy asked, or when Pamela asked the fact about there was a study done pre-approved, I mean, pre, was it pre hurricane Michael? And I read in the second time, would you get an answer, said yes. Uh, in my opinion, it needs to be done, since we are developing this land now, I think we need to have another, for the city or infirmity, to have it engineering for now, actually. to add an engineering for now, after hurricane. But I, it does change it. And, uh, does, does, anyway, if you look, if you look at the property, you can take it. And another thing I got was, Mr. Guy brought the, the HLA deal in near cancer. Do, can we see something in black and white that says that we know what we're doing in it? I mean, do we know for sure, I'm like, uh, Mr. Key said, I don't want us to stop something and then we get in the middle of it and we can't do it. Do, do we know this, I mean, you, you said, yeah, but have you seen something in black and white that says that that road?
Well, the, I can read the exact quote from the plat dedication, uh, but that was what I was reviewing before. I've also now got the Declaration of Covenants restrictions, that's the, the first primary, most important HLA document that, that, that exists, so it does define their, their common area properties and it even has exhibits that list them out and describe them, and the road's not included, it's, it's a passive park, a stormwater area, and a let's see, just one other. Passive park, stormwater basin, and stormwater management access, these, those are the common areas in their Declaration of Covenants that the, the association is maintaining. I haven't seen anything that would indicate-
Where, where is their, where's their stormwater pond? On the plat? Is it across the road, like where the others are gonna be?
On the new plat.
On the original, the ones we were talking about there? It's not across the street, it's, it's on their side?
No.
Yeah, okay, that's all I need to know.
Pond right here.
Yeah, but they, they've got one over here.
Yeah.
Somewhere, is what he's saying.
Behind.
A four and a half.
Yeah, okay.
But it's, it would definitely be on the same side of the road as the, they know the other property, well, it wasn't part of the plat.
And one more thing, uh, I would like to, I would like to, I'd like to get it re-engineered after, pre, after Michael and see if there's any changes before, if, if we could, and it's a good point that, that our city, and I know my, I always say we, we had somebody to do it, but uh, our city's engineer is Duver. And my, it's usually Duver, Paradise Cove, so, to me, I, I think, we probably do have somebody, but having the same person do the same job is not, to me, is not right. And I, I think we need to do a little bit more study, which that's all I've been doing, except when I went up on a little vacation, and the more we dig, the more we find. And I just, I think a little more time to do is all good. And then for, for camping, we'll come back with the six houses, we got to do, that's my opinion.
Well, I see some of what you're saying, but all we gonna do is have a house, we have to do, have a project we have to do, to go back and redo it, we got a LDR, at least our LDR. That's my, that's my-
Yeah, as far as the, a past study on this property prior to Michael, I don't know what, what that was, there may have been one, um, but we, we do have our much more strict stormwater, I mean, uh, more strict floodplain requirements now, that's post Michael, applies to this area. Um, and we, we will do further, the applicant will do further engineering on this project if they get to the next stage. And we do have another engineering firm on contract for situations like this. Handing ill-generations on contract, and this would be a, a good time to use them, it's, it's up to the city whether to set up that task order and, and incur the expense, but they're available.
I'd like, I'm in favor of doing that.
I am as well.
Well, they're gonna do the review at the end, uh, that's who the city uses, I, I, I'm not for incurring any more expense for a preliminary plat that does nothing more than outline just the map that we see. I am for changing the lots, go to that, that's all.
The, the role of the, the second engineer in the city's other engineer, it wouldn't be to design something or study the area, it'd be to review the formal engineering that's submitted by the applicant and either agree with it or ask questions or, or, uh, say it won't work, that's the role, they, they don't do design, they do review.
Okay, uh, additional comments? Chair entertain a motion and/or any other comments at the table pass?
Make a motion, we approve the preliminary plat on the colleges of Paradise Cove with the exception of changing the, uh, Paradise Cove lots from six, from nine to six.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I think that, uh, I, I think that we don't really have a choice, this has been kind of a really tricky thing for people to like or comprehend, and there are valid points on both things, but I think, as Josh says, they gotta do a re-engineering, or they gotta do the engineering, it comes later. This really doesn't give them permission to do anything other than go to the next stage, which is engineering, and at that stage, Josh, you could have issues that may prevent it from even happening, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we don't know unless we go there. And if we don't go there, then, then we are, we are going against our LDR and our ordinances, is that correct, Nick?
Yes, if we just denied this, there's not a good basis for that because it, it does in general mean-
Well, I, I like what the mayor said about another issue, I reluctantly second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further comments? Lizzy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Okay, so we will notify them about the exception and we'll be standing by to hear what, what's, yes.
Uh, I, I would also like to say, because right now while we, we're still on this, uh, Josh is, uh, he's a fellow on our team, he's part of who we depend on to do things for us, and he's a valuable source for any questions that anyone in the council or the city might have, they can call him. His job is to answer your questions, so, so that anytime anything comes up, just know that Josh is available, and he, he represents the city, so he's our answer man for engineering issues. So, he's not a bad guy, he's not the enemy, he's, he's part of the team, and he's part of the team that's, that's got a bloody lip to do all this for probably no reason, so anyhow, just wanted to throw that in. Josh is a good guy, he's on our team.
Just as some other background, the way I understand it is Josh was involved with this project a couple of years ago, before the hurricane. This is not a standard routine thing you're gonna see where he's bringing projects to the council. It had more to do with project getting slowed down from hurricane.
Yeah, right.
Just clarification, I actually inherited it after Michael.
Great inheritance there, Josh.
Okay, uh, are we clear on how, on how to proceed with the developer on as far as the motion and the, all right, moving on, uh, next is the, uh, a motion for resolution for, uh, Salt Creek. Mario, could you help us there, or sort of give us what we're doing here?
Uh, on Salt Creek, the, the, the initial phase of Salt Creek was to clear up two where it's bottlenecks to the north and there's drawings injured that support that.
Right.
We had to go back to the four of engineers to extend apartment north of that point, and it took a little while to get that approval, we literally got that approval last week, or ten days ago, so we couldn't tell the contractor, go ahead and clear that area until we got that approval. Now that we have that approval, we'd like to release them to do the balance of the work. All this still falls within the original three point one million dollars of the NRCS, uh, project. The Saint Joe Company's providing the match, so this is no money out of city coffers, this is strictly cleanup of the natural waterway that was facilitated through NRCS.
And you also, one of the issues that we had to resolve was, they didn't wanna, they wanted to stay narrowly to where the creek banks were, and of course, when it flooded, it went way out of bounds, and then, so that's why the additional cost, because it, or, or that was part of it, we had to get wider.
The original conversations, they were just looking at the, at the creek as just the, the true water's edge, you know, that you see every day, what people don't see is that that wire grass has water in it.
Mm-hmm.
That, that was done a couple of months ago, that they agreed that the wider edge of the, the total floodplain of the, of the creek bottom was, this is the northernmost perimeter, and what happened is the three point one million dollars is gonna go further than we even thought. As a matter of fact, I got a call from Mark earlier today that said that they didn't even think that they utilized the full three point one million dollars in the cleanup even with this ex, uh, extended area.
That's good news.
Okay, uh, is there a motion?
I got, I got a quick, Mario. The first one was two point four million.
I believe so.
I believe so. And then now they asking for six hundred and thirty-five more thousand dollars?
They are not asking for, we are, we are, we added to the project, which is the six hundred and thirty-five more dollars. They're, if we want them to do the work, we would have to basically-
And this is all, this is all approved, I mean, what, what gets new, they, they ask for this more money, six hundred and thirty-five more thousand dollars, and we owe a lot of people around here, we can't get a grant from FEMA or get money to pay these bills, and then now we, we can, we can get this to extend these? You, you see what I'm saying, I don't quite understand how we can do it. How we can get money for, for this project when we still owe money for other projects and we can't get that money? But yet again, you can, you said that we got to extend in there, wouldn't be no money out of our pocket. But I think, I think they still bill the city, and then when we get the grant, then you pay it, is that where it goes?
It is a reimbursement-
Re- reimbursement, but we, they do bill Mexico Beach?
They will bill Mexico Beach in this particular project because it is NRCS, which is completely separate from FEMA, please understand that.
I, 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 but then it is-
We will take, we will take that bill and send it directly to, um, NRCS, and they will actually make the payment, I believe, in this particular case. No, I'm, I'm sorry, that is not correct, uh, because the Saint Joe Company has already deposited the money into our account to make the, the initial payment, so it is a reimbursement program, but it is a thirty day lag.
Is it correct that the additional six hundred and seventy-three thousand is to pay for more work to the north that wasn't originally scoped? This isn't just more-
This is additional scope to KK Storm's contract, this is not additional scope to this, um, grant.
Right, right, we always expected it to be about three point one million, but the first task order we didn't put a full three point one in because you weren't ready to scope the northern portion of the project.
That's correct. This is additional scope-
I like the way we expect, I mean, I don't like expecting that, I believe when they turn in the original orders, all being as close to it as you get instead of coming back in two weeks or a month and, and come up with six hundred and thirty-five more thousand dollars, even though it's a grant. I, I still pay taxes, and that, this is not my thing. I'm not in favor of it.
Was this the original smaller scope because the city, you created that limit, or was it, yes, so-
It was because we were visiting, uh, we were waiting on the Army Corps permit to, we had permitted the first scope of work, which I think was a total of four thousand five hundred linear feet of channel cleanup, but this sixteen hundred linear feet to the north, um, myself and, um, Cameron Morris went out and watched this full length of creek, and we noticed a lot more degree all the way up that, this additional length of scope. So, but we didn't have the permit at that time from Army Corps DP to do that additional work, so we turned loose what we could, um, but we were waiting on the permits to come through before we could turn them loose on the second part.
And this is grant money?
This is grant.
Not tax money?
It, it is tax money in the sense that, that money is going, federal, it's federal tax money that we're already paying, I, I'm not saying that FEMA's money is free. FEMA's money comes to somebody, they can pay that.
Okay.
And they didn't build this land in Mexico Beach either. If we get Salt Creek drained and everything, it's not gonna give it to us. It's none of this land they're doing belonged to us. I intend to complete cleanup, but I'm just saying.
Who owns the land? Would that be Saint Joe Company?
The Saint Joe Company owns all of the perimeter land, the waterway itself is sovereign land, and that is, that is why, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, state, state waters, and that's why the Saint Joe Company is providing the match, so the city is not out of pocket.
And Saint Joe Company's already done what now?
Saint Joe Company's already paid half of the portion that they're responsible for just to kick things off.
Yes, they picked three hundred and something thousand already between the positive.
What, what was our part, Mario? What was our, the city's part to? I mean, they did, I did, it was the seniors, what was, what, it was very, it wasn't that, it was sure with no million dollars that they gave us.
The, the city's part is zero.
But if Saint Joe wasn't paying- Saint Joe wouldn't pay you, the seniors, where there was a senior-
Twenty-five percent is responsible to be a match, Saint Joe is providing the twenty-five percent match.
So, we, we'll pay the lot.
Correct.
By the time it's over with.
Correct.
Okay, others, questions, comments? On the resolution? To extend the work, scope of the work? Chair entertain a motion? To read the resolution?
I'll make a motion, we read resolution twenty, twenty-five. My title on the-
So, motion and second, any opposition, reading? Lizzy, would you read, please?
Resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving an agreement with KK Storm LLC slash Kaiser Kane Storm LLC joint venture for an amended not to exceed in the amount of three million one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty, twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, again, any comments? Please call the roll.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
Okay, uh, plus, moving on, number five is me. The employment agreement, in your packet is a commonly used employment agreement, this time it has, as all of you know, we made Lizzy the interim, city clerk, I'm simply proposing to the council that we remove the interim. I think she's done, in my opinion, she's done a remarkable job, she's shown her abilities to handle what we need done, and the only thing that's out of the ordinary in terms of employment agreement is under number section three, which is number A. There, I'm recommending a gradual transfer in salary from what she's actually making now until such time as she completes the training, and proposing then a modest increase of four, to forty-five-five upon completion of the, some of the training for the records requirements for the city clerk as a statutory position, as well as a charter position in the city. She's one of two employees that the city council oversees. She's one of two employees that the city council oversees. And so I am proposing that we approve the employment agreement with those, with caveat of the training before the money, before moving her to that forty-five-five salary.
Just one other thing in the agreement that's a little different. I understand from staff, it's due to the budget adoption process, but this employment agreement has a commencement date of October first, twenty twenty, so that's fine. But if you wanna go ahead and, in your motion, clarify that for the time being, for the next two months, that, that Lindsay is appointed to be the regular city clerk.
Yeah, I guess I thought that was implied that that's the way that was law. But yeah, this contract does not take effect till October first. Yeah, the same, the same time that the budget rolls in, this sort of makes everything, it makes it easier to track. So, and this agreement is the same one we use for Ivo and Hilo, it takes way back for, at least for the clerk and the administrator. So, I'm putting that out if you care to discuss it. We have some comments about moving forward, getting a city clerk with an important position in the city and we need to, not that we have to do it today, but it's, that's what I'm proposing.
I got one thing. I, I got a couple things too. I, 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 I really, Lindsay's doing a wonderful job as a, she did. And when we needed a city clerk, she stepped up to the job. And has done an outstanding job. She, she wanted to, you could look at, she wanted to really learn how to do it in, in, in my opinion, on the salary. In my opinion, being the city clerk. I, I think you all be the top pay lady in the department.
Thank you.
And she needs, I don't think, in my opinion, I, I really think that as people worked under her or make, make new money than she does, I believe her, I, I think forty-five thousand, whatever. I, I don't think that's enough money. That's the only thing I disagree with the whole thing. We need her. She's done an excellent job.
So. There's people that do other jobs that are under that job that make more money?
Yes.
Well, I, I'm, Ms. Monique's here. I'm gonna stand up for Ms. Monique too. I think, I think they're both equally important. But I'm thinking probably for the education, Ms. Monique should be the top pay and then Ms. Lindsay. And, yeah, so, yeah.
It's both them to a city clerk.
We, we, we love, we love both these ladies and know that they're doing a great job. They really are and they got a tough job. And I really love Ms. Lindsay's accent, which has nothing to do with it. So, so anyhow. And I agree with you. She does need a raise from what, what she's been paid now.
No one works under the, under the statutory and the charter. There are no employees that work directly under the clerk. Clerk works at the discretion of the city council. There's only two employees in the city that do that.
The clerk and the?
Clerk and the administrator.
Okay.
And if you look in the office, I don't, I mean, I don't disagree. They're all of our employees. I could justify that. I think they all deserve more. But given that she has, I mean, you're dealing with some ladies over there that have been here a long time. Lindsay's been here five years. It's hard to just not, I mean, the clerk, when we divided that up, I think based on that we had a city clerk's position that was paying sixty-five thousand a year. Uh, I thought that for accepting that responsibility, sure it's modest, sure it's modest. Forty-five-five is modest. But it's, it's a good faith, in my opinion, from the city council that, hey, we, not only do we like you and we're telling you we like you, we're gonna give you a little more money. And let her get some training, let her get some, where, where she has more credentials as far as a city clerk. And that was why I chose, and I did that sitting in front of her with her, talking to her about that. I didn't just use some arbitrary number. So I think for someone new that is, is energetic and willing to learn, I believe, I'm, I believe that's a fair monetary advancement. Until such time as the city's in better financial shape to do what we can. So that's why I put it in. And that's why I also chose, we, we talked about the backing up to Au- August, October first to get the budget, get everything more in line. And she was very agreeable to that and understood. Plus it gives her a couple of months to do some, some training and document to us that she's completed certain courses and things like that, so. But as far as agreeing to everything that's been said about her and her work ethic, absolutely. Absolutely, that's totally agreeable.
I think we give her eighteen hundred dollar raise, is that what we do? Forty-three, forty-five, forty-three, twenty, forty-three.
Yeah, I got that, yeah.
Eighteen hundred. I'd say this year five thousand. She stepped up to the place when we needed somebody. I believe, I believe.
But now, please, keep in mind that she was, she also got an extra bump on her pay for stepping up. This is not the forty-three, her current salary was increased when she stepped up to the place.
As an intern.
I would agree with that.
I mean, I, I just want everybody to have the same facts. So it's, it's, it's not like she was not compensated. But when you're a five-year employee up against people that have been there ten, twelve, fifteen years, it's hard to just look at a piece of paper and say, well, she's not making what all these other people make. I believe this city, a city clerk's position, of her energy level, that, that she, she can certainly do better, but she's not there right now. And she, she readily admits that she has areas that she needs to improve in and get training in. So I think we're helping her. I mean, I may be wrong, the eighteen hun- I mean, you may not, you may not think that's enough, but I, I, for me, I'm satisfied that that opens the door and shows our commitment to, to making her a worthy employee that we all talk about. So, again, it's a statutory requirement. It's a charter requirement that those separation of duties are outlined. And that's why the employment agreement for just, for, for her and for Mario were set up the way they are. All the other label pool is all, all falls under the administrative. But those two positions, and they've always been handled by having a separate agreement, something that we as a council can track and see what's going on. So if we are, if, if there's a motion, if there's further discussion, uh, again, keep in mind that this agreement does not take effect until October first. And it also doesn't mean, can't be me.
Well, I think Lindsay's doing a great job. She's been very helpful to me. She seems like she's in agreement with the money. Am I right? I don't know.
I'm just.
You just happy to be here?
No. I just feel, I, I did speak with the mayor about it.
Okay.
So that's great, I was at, but this is for the team to discuss.
Okay. Well, I think she's doing a great job. Truly, I do.
All right, do you, anybody wanna comment more and/or make a motion to accept the employment agreement?
I make a motion to accept the employment agreement.
Second.
The city clerk.
I have a motion in second to accept the employment agreement. Is there any other comments? Okay. Call, roll please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pollard?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. And Lindsay, thank you. I wanna make sure you, I know you heard us talk, but we all do truly appreciate your effort and energy. And it is a team effort over there. Contrary to, I mean, it takes, they all have different titles, but in the end, you put them in a blender and some days you don't know if it's gonna get the job done, so. Thank you to all of them. Uh, construction standards, uh, Thomas, I just got your name on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let everybody know, I've been working with Du Berry, Johnson, and Taylor about setting up some utility construction standards with all the buildings one on in the city. Right now, nobody wants to build Mexico Beach, we're using Bay County standards. That's not, Bay County's very good standards, but we need to adopt our own, so we have a more streamlined of everything that we use. So we don't have mix, max, lift station, control panel, stuff like that. I work with Du Berry, Du Berry got it set up, you know, the packet's so thick, we didn't prepare the freaks. Yeah, I could see this today when I gave him that big packet here. But if we got a copy of the standards that we just need, I don't know what the proper procedure is for them adopting.
You reviewed them, you reviewed them. And we have general acceptance or something better than we, we've ever had any, so.
Yes, yeah, actually, what we all have is Bay County. And Bay County standards, they're great and everything, but some of their stuff's more, a lot more elaborate than what we actually truly need. Kind of, this is actually we use, I think Panama City Beach.
Mario, are you recommending that they have, that, I mean, that, that we move?
Yes, sir. Th- th- this, this standard will basically is the guidelines for any future development that happens within Mexico Beach will follow these standards. So we know what pipe they use, we know what valve designs they use and things like that. That way, when he goes out to do a replacement or digging something up five, six, eight, ten years from now, he knows what he's digging into. He's not gonna go in there and find sprinkler pipe where they're supposed to be scheduled eight years.
Sort of the class pipe or C nine hundred is, like you said, thin wall.
Now, does, is this something, uh, is this an action by the council to accept or does this just information?
It's information, but it, it would be good to have it as action because that way it's an affirmative action for the future developers to know that they have to follow these guidelines.
And this is, the equipment and facilities, correct or wrong, are either immediately for the city or that will be dedicated to the city. This isn't for like a private homeowner, what they do with their house.
No, this is for city.
Exactly.
So we're not, we're not creating a rule for everybody in the public to follow. This is a rule for how we want the city's own equipment and facilities to be specked out.
Okay.
And the only other thing to have with that is they say it's a city split, and we do know that going outside of town here, like sugar stained development, places like that, they're technically outside of city limits. But they're on our utility system, so they would have to, anything attached to our utility system would have to follow these same standards, even though technically they're outside of city limits.
Right.
And this also just helps us enforce and, you know, we got four thousand material things we gotta keep on y'all, we kinda streamline our materials, so we're not having to buy a bunch of extra material stuff, so.
And that's why you can prove this with just a regular motion. If, if you're making rules for every citizen in the whole city to follow, that would be in ordinance, but this is just for.
In, in hash, okay.
And we also have to follow these same standards, just like when we do the work in the system, we have to follow them just like everybody else would, so.
So anything that we've got right now that's not in accordance with these?
Towards we, anything pre.
So eventually, eventually we'll, we'll, we will have everything, even the, the stuff that's not following this now that we fix will be done according to this.
Like you were example that, our meters for some of our big condos.
Mm-hmm.
They are an old style meter that no longer matches our system.
Mm-hmm.
This standard allows us to upgrade them to the new.
When they need upgraded.
When they need upgraded.
Okay.
So then we have to follow the standards like everybody else.
Yeah.
And if that condo comes in, they will build.
They'll have this standard.
Sure, right.
Be your standard.
I, I don't see anything but good about it because it's, you know, it, it creates, it creates an ease of atmosphere. Plus when, as a contractor, I know what I'm doing when I come in, I've got something and there's no mistakes about it and, you know, and we don't get the wool pulled over our eyes by somebody that bought some really cheap stuff and, you know, can use it. I like it.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion that we accept this. Um, what's the number? I make a motion we accept the Mexico Beach Utility Department construction standards.
No. I have a motion in second. Is there any further comment and/or discussion? Is there any opposition? Let the record reflect the pass five oh. Thank you very much, Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pollard, number seven? Okay, I've been under comments talking about wearing masks. I asked Mario to do it on the meeting, told him, really think we need to do it. We need to get out, we need to have our people in our city feel safe. The people that voted us in, represented us, not our personal beliefs or, or whatever. We need to make them feel safe and do it. I've had citizens tell me they will not go into a store in Mexico Beach because not wear masks. They will be, they go to wherever it is for Sancho, whatever, to do it. Now, you, uh, you can have arguments of all kind, one way to other. I'm not gonna stand here and argue, I just feel like it's a safer thing to do to have masks on in public places. Uh, you take for example, the conduits. Somebody, people always come into the conduits and elevators. You go in there, it's enclosed area, it's a dangerous spot. And yes, you might not touch them, or something, whatever. I'm not gonna argue that point at all. I think we are responsible to our citizens to make it as safe as possible. Uh, I can give you an example, a friend of mine, and mostly y'all know him, uh, was at a funeral and also working in the church. Uh, him and his wife both contracted the virus. Uh, seventeen people in that church contacted the virus. Uh, one died. Uh, and he said, and he didn't mind me mentioning the name, so if you wanna talk to him here, what about you, talk to him? He's the one that was contacted. He was definitely ill for three, three weeks. Uh, he's lucky, he, they took care of him a lot. Uh, it's growing, it's growing in, in Gutt County, it's growing all in Bay County. Uh, it shows we have eleven people. There's quite a bit more because, uh, I know several of them that's not on, on record. Uh, again, I, I, I'm not comfortable wearing a mask. I'm not saying it is the perfect thing to do by any means. But if it's to help or to make our citizens safer, I feel like we need to adopt a plan of wearing a mask in public places. Have a say. Yeah, anybody else? I, I, I agree. I think that if you, if you listen and watch the, the people that are experts in the health. I mean, it's obviously happening around us at, at a higher rate than we've, than we've seen. And I just think it's, I think it's the prudent thing to do. And the right thing to do to help protect as many people as we can. And I'll leave it at that. But it's obviously not going away by doing nothing. So.
I'd like to say something.
Okay, use this second.
As a resident.
As a resident here, Bobby and Al, thank you, and Al knows how rare this is for me to say thank you to him, but thank you for advocating for us. Most of the residents that I talked to, certainly the ones that I am still in contact with right now, are all wearing masks. We are all afraid to go into the Mexico Beach market, into the post office. Because no one wears masks anywhere around there. And I would like for the council members to think, when they go to Port St. Joe, they're required to wear masks. When they go to Panama City Beach, they're required to wear masks, when they go to Apalachicola also. So I don't understand the reluctance of some of the city council not to protect the people that they are supposed to be working for. And it's not a political statement, and it moves away from your personal feelings, it is a matter of public safety, a matter of public health. And if we don't feel safe in Mexico Beach, where yes, it's rampant here in the city, you don't know that. Um, if we don't feel safe here and you're not helping to mitigate the situation, you're not doing your job. So we need to have a mask mandate in this town, and so I would implore you to pass this and help us feel safe.
Okay, like, anybody? Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we required in Mexico Beach to wear a mask in public places. We have a motion on floor. We need, there a second? There is, is there any, is there a second? For the record, I'm going to relinquish the chair, even though Bobby's the mayor pro tem, uh, I'm going to relinquish the chair to Jerry. And, uh, second the motion. Well, I can't, it, it's, 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 it'll allow for that. You don't have to be the mayor pro tem to chair, he made the motion, it's not appropriate to, to relinquish it to him. But I'm just going to relinquish it to you. And I second the motion. All right.
So, so are you saying that with two people, the motion passes against three people?
No, the motion is up for vote. I second it so that it can come before vote, you can't, all you have to do is, there's now a motion and second, so it requires at least you ask for a vote.
It's either further discussion now or a vote.
Yeah, further discussion and/or a vote.
And, and not defy you, but Nick, we can't do this, I, I ain't been on me like you, I have, I'm not good, but, so.
It, it's okay for you to handle this motion if that's what you're asking, as far as, um, if this passes, we'll probably want something a little more detailed in an emergency order format, but let's see if we get to that point first.
Okay, if, but now, if he has been put as mayor pro tem, he doesn't have a vote.
Yeah.
Or does he? He does have a vote. Okay, so, you know, I, I, I appreciate everyone's fear, I, I understand the fear, there's, there's fear in this country. Um, but there's, there's also, there's also something else. Um, the COVID is not the only thing that's killing people these days. Um, there are many studies that prove that depression, unemployment, for every point of unemployment, by locking down with unemployment, more people are being killed as a result of the measures being taken to protect people from COVID than there are being killed by COVID. So it, it also, also, I, I think that, uh, from what I understand, and my point of reference, my main point of reference is Judge Napolitano, who is a constitutionalist, uh, from, for years. According to what he says, uh, the only place that a city could institute a mask is on their premises. Uh, you can't do it to stores, to apartments, to anything else other than public property. Uh, and if, if you do it to other places other than public properties or municipality properties, the legislature of that state has to pass a law that you can do it. So it's not, you know, it's, it's, there, there are, there are very, very, very many, many, many other things about this that are, that need to be taken into consideration. I'm not an uncompassionate person, I, I know that people are scared of this, and, and they have that right to be scared and afraid, and they have the right to wear a mask, they have the right not to go somewhere. But they don't have the right to, to go against the constitution and affect our civil liberties and the natural law that we have been given by our God. So I, I'm not, I'm not being irresponsible, I don't like being told that I'm irresponsible for my decisions, because my decisions are, this is a very intensely, extremely complicated situation that we have never really truly been in before. And I think that there's a place where you draw the line and say, you know, we're either going to be a constitutional republic and be protected by our constitution, or we're not. And, and then, for the very final fact in my determination, is there, with, with a vaccine, a vaccine, you're given a small, less potent portion of the disease so that you catch the disease, so that you build up immunity. So the way that you defeat this is, um, actually contracting it and building up immunity to it. It's the way viruses have always been, it's the way flus have always been, and the death rate, to me, is what I make my determination, my final determination. You know, when we, when it first came out, we were told million, a million people will die. Uh, the death number, you actually have a ninety-nine point eight percent chance, if you contract the COVID nineteen, of surviving. So as long as that death rate stays that low, or even close to that low, then I think you're, you're hurting people by all the other things and the ways that you're killing them by making them stay home, making them lock down. And I think some of the democratic cities in the north, then, and I'm not trying to be political about Democrat, Republican, I'm just saying that uh, there's a lot of death going on up there that is caused by the reaction to it, so that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, I got, I got to ask one thing on this.
Okay.
Uh, we got people in city hall.
Mm-hmm.
That have very bad health problems, we got people whose spouses have bad health problems.
Mm-hmm.
So you saying it's okay in case they get it and give it to them and their spouse dies, it's okay because of civil rights?
No, Bobby, that's, that's, that's not what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I say protect the people.
See, you're, you're, you're mad at me, and I'm not mad at you, Bobby. You're raising your voice at me, Bobby, and, and you're, you're insinuating.
No, I'm, I'm, everybody here.
You're, you're insinuating that I don't care if someone gets it and dies.
Well, that's basically what you said.
No, that's not, that has no, okay, well, I, I can't argue with that because you're, you're, you're telling me what I'm saying and I, and I can't argue.
That's what I heard.
Well, it's.
If, if you're civil rights and everybody else is civil rights.
Listen.
Not aware.
Listen, listen, in the city hall, those people up there, there, if you come in the door, we've already instituted it, if you come in the door, only two people can come in, into that front area. Everybody that's up there is either behind a glass or in their own office. I, when I go into the city hall and I go get my packet, or I go do anything else that I do, I go in and people are not wearing masks. So, you know, there are people sitting here now that work in there that are not wearing masks, so, you know, you're, you're, you're saying that i- if, if this was a, a spot where, where massive amounts of people were coming in, then that might be a different determination, but you're, these people up here, there's not a lot, okay?
Don't take a one.
Listen, but, but you're assuming that I'm sick, if I go in without a mask, you're assuming that I'm sick. I'm not sick.
How do you know? In that church I was talking about, the pastor did not know he was sick.
Okay.
It got spread out.
Okay.
Now, you might not know you're sick, you may be sick.
Well, I, if I, you know, with the symptoms of the COVID, you know, the three major symptoms are shortness of breath, fever, and one other one. Cough, whatever, but, you know, I don't have any of those things, and I can tell you that because I truly care about those people around me, even those people that I don't know that well, if I, if I start, and I know when I've got a fever, I always go to Lucretia and say, Phil, do I have a fever? No, you don't have a fever. She says, but you're kind of a little warm, so she goes and gets the thermometer. I'm going to tell you, if I get sick, I'm going to call everybody, I don't know what I'll be sick of, but I'm gonna, I'm not going to come around you.
I feel like you would. I'm not saying you would not do it.
Right.
But when I say you, I'm talking about anybody.
But, but what you're, I'm just saying that we can't as a society, we have to, we can't as a society, um, dictate, we don't have that right to dictate what other people do. You, you just don't, you don't have that right.
So big ones run stop signs? I mean, hell, how far you want to go with this?
No, I, I, I don't want to go any further, actually.
I'm not going to argue with you anymore, because you, you got your mindset up, it will never change.
No, I.
I'm still saying.
That's, that's so unfair, Bobby, I, I change my mind all the time when I learn more information, so.
Okay. I, I, I was elected by these citizens with take concern, to me, that's part of protecting them, representing the citizens of Mexico Beach.
And what about the citizens that don't agree with the mask, are, are we not representing them?
Well, I guarantee majority of them.
Well, you guarantee that, but not, that's not my, that's not my guess.
You can represent the city, they need to.
Well, that's not my, that's not my experience, my experience is that the majority of people, if you want to say that, are not in favor of doing masks.
Okay, we're not, we can't.
Thank you.
Oh, Lord, please, please. I'm going to give y'all thirty more seconds to fight this out.
I'm not fighting, I, I'm not fighting.
I know you're not, and I, I, I really believe, but I mean, by the way, I know you, both of y'all, please don't say this, y'all party. Oh, really? Yeah, I am too. Yeah, I am, but I don't, I just, I assume we should conduct ourselves and just shout, and I know you got your ideas, he's got his. So now, let's move on, please, and I, I, I'm not rushing, if you've got something to say, if you've got something to say.
No, I've, that's.
Bobby, you threw hashtag, you threw, throw up your hands, say I don't want to do it no more, I, 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 I. All right, Darrell, what about you?
I'm swayed.
All right, let's move on, what we do next?
Call for the vote.
Let's call for the vote, Lindsey, please.
Okay, Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Pollitt?
Yes.
Mr. Key?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. You did fine.
You didn't even care about it. No.
All right, he, he did, I can tell you. I saw it in his eyes. Uh, next is number eight, uh, MG, Mario, I see, go for it.
Yes, sir. The, the team last year put together a package and it went to the legislature, it went to the legislature, it passed, and then it, it even made it through all the reductions of the budget. But the city has received five hundred thousand dollars to support, uh, the city pier in, in land purchase in some shape, fashion, or form, so something that will help the city pier. It, it is not to design the pier, it's not to build the pier, it is a, for lack of a better term, educational support to the city pier, and the city has five hundred thousand dollars. That money will come to the city in the rears, the city will have to spend that money first, and then it'll get reimbursed by the state legislature to the two and five hundred thousand.
What's the, what's the timeline on it? I didn't read it.
It has to be done, I believe it's June of next year's one.
So we have to have spent that money by June of next year?
Yeah, here, I'm following here, right here.
Follow the letter.
Twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry that I didn't review all of this, uh, so what can we, and what can we not spend that money for? Is it, is it simple as that?
Purchase property.
We can purchase property and that's it? Okay, okay.
So, uh, maybe I think where we go to that is if we, Mario, you, and some staff, they all sort of scout out what we, what might be available, and then we'll have to just make a decision if we want to pursue it. Team, we got to have the money.
So, and, so we're not going to, we would have to buy the property where the pier was? I don't understand.
No, no, we already own the property where the pier is, this is property outside of the pier that will support the pier.
Okay.
Along the road, yes.
So where those houses used to be and all that stuff?
One of the things that was talked about when, when we applied for this was to have an educational slash informative, maybe about the hurricane, about the city, about what happened, about, you know, uh, something that would support. I don't, I was hoping that we would get something that would be, that would have more latitude than what this grant does, but we didn't, we got, it's pretty, it's, my, it's not, it's very direct what it can be used for. Uh, so I think this, we, we don't pass on it, we simply try to see what, what land might be available to us that would, that would justify the criteria that's outlined here, and then we'll have to make a decision. You know, sometimes you be careful what you wish for, you get, I, I don't know, uh, I don't know what we would put there, how we would develop it, I, I don't know, that, we have to just think about it, but right now, at least we know we're, basically a year we've got, we're making decisions. That, it's more informational, right, I think?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nothing, nothing to act on, we, we received the grant.
We're not going to get far down that road buying property, even though five hundred's a lot of money.
The pier?
The support of the pier.
Yeah, the support of the pier.
That'd be some piling, wouldn't it?
I vote for, I vote for a bait shop right at the end, so that these guys can buy. We might can get a bait shop out of it.
All right, we're going to.
This will only buy the land, this will not build the bait shop or build the educational.
Right, don't do any of that.
Build anything, it's just a property.
Yeah, okay.
What we could, we could park on it.
Yes, yes, sir.
I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't put us out money for construction is what I mean, other than some little land development, I mean, we could do that. And we'll look at that, so, but we just got, I say, right there, it sounds like a lot, so you go try to buy some land. All right, moving on, Nick, you're first up, you have anything for us?
I do not.
No? All right, uh, financial, I assume is coming when we finish?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
There you are, you're all so quiet out there today. All right. Keith, what you got?
Now, nothing, nothing much new today, we're continuing with the house maintenance and, and we're starting now to do our previous, you know, fire pounds of all the condos that are coming back online. So, uh, just basically keeping up with the everyday running, the, the department's keeping up with our SOE, private parts, and so on.
Okay, any questions for, excuse me, five? All right, what you got, Mr. Lieutenant?
No, it's been pretty quiet, especially with Jerry out of town, the monkey's. So if you have any problems or rats or anything else. So, if you have any problems or rats or anything else.
Well, yeah. Now, to these facts, I guess y'all, y'all rested up and you're ready, okay, rested up, you're ready.
Did, did we find Hector's side by side?
We have not yet, we're still the best, we still run it down there.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Any questions for police? Okay. Gina, got anything for building?
Nothing, nothing new, any, any questions, like Nancy?
Glad to see you back.
You're feeling well, we're glad.
Everybody knows the gas station permit was issued, right? Everybody knows that. Code, we have anything for Code?
Speaking of Code-
Code's coming in?
Oh, man, I'm totally on it.
Hello?
Hello, um, I've been going around, I'm gonna try to, well, first, I have to clean up my reports, because they're pretty much out of hand, but a lot of the demo's been going on, a lot of the life clearing has been going on pretty good. Um, I've sent down quite a few more notices this week and last week, uh, for debris removal, um, I'm just working on all that, trying to make this look pretty.
Do you have any questions for Code?
She's doing a good job.
Yes, she is.
She's actually a lot of improvement in that neighborhood, and we're gonna monitor those. Y'all, see, everybody comes to my welcome center, I've got them backed up in my welcome.
Are you gonna put a sign up?
Hell, I haven't got a sign up yet.
It's already up.
Where are you taking it? That's my sign.
I don't come around here.
She's doing, you can see a lot of improvements, I, I appreciate you doing a good job.
Do we know anything about his welcome center before it's being torn down or put up?
Well, people don't live in Port St. Joe anymore, I found out they lived in Tampa, so, recently they just resent a, um, little violation to their Tampa address, I found them on the full program, PA.
So, if it gets torn down, we can take, put a sign over here in Port?
That's not a code.
I know you're feeling loved. All right, any, anything, okay?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Fun of work.
Mayor, uh, Council, just continuing on what we normally do, uh, cutting grass this time of year, uh, taking care of whatever, need to be taken care of throughout the city. Also wanted to say, due to the good weather we had the last couple of weeks, uh, Troy and Nick have been able to do a lot of PM on the dredge, it was really needed, uh, replacing parts on it and all, so, uh, you know, the canal's in, in good shape, they're working on that a little bit today, doing a little cleanup on it, but, uh, with good weather, like I said, we've been able to get a lot of work done on that, we need to, so, uh, other than that, just, uh, taking care of anything that comes to us.
Tommy, how are the tracks on the dunes, it looks like the rope has ke- kept a lot of peo-, I haven't seen many people walking across it now.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what, is, it actually is a good idea, is to turn a lot of people, plus the signs gets placed down through there, and we like, we're on the last, uh, last little bit of it now, probably by the end of this week, that'll all be completed and, uh, finished with, so, uh, yeah, I think that's, uh, that's to turn a lot of people, uh, so, that actually's gonna, gonna work out, be a good idea, I listen.
Good call, Mayor.
Anything proposed, work? Any question? Thank you. Uh, Josh, you got anything for?
Since I missed the last meeting, I don't know if David got formal introduction, but this is David Rising, he's new with our staff, and will be supporting us out here as well with Mexico Beach, so, we've got some extra folks, a lot into the area. I'll just cover the highlights, and I gave you this where you guys can read it, municipal complex, um, we met with Mario in the last week, and we're working on the layout of the entrance road, uh, for the tower construction, and we expect to have something preliminary by the end of this week for us to review and move and, and get laid out, so we can work on, I guess, the, the big tower, the length and width. Um, next step on that will be to get with Dag and work on the overall preliminary site layout, that was the first portion of our contract, is to actually get the entire complex laid in the site and see what it would look like. The marine I've left on there, as far as I know, it hasn't been obligated yet, and FEMA has no outstanding questions, we're just waiting on obligation, looking for it. Sunset Park, um, we're working on revision to the site layout provided by the architect, um, rearranging some parking, rearranging the building a little bit, and we're hoping by the end of this week to have a preliminary site plan, ready for that as well, for review, for us to be able to look at. Um, next step, just once we get that preliminary site plan laid down, something that everybody's satisfied with, we'll move forward to the meeting, we'll be just insurers to discuss the cost of construction, the control line, per meeting, and what they will and won't allow. Citywide streets, um, we're finalizing the revised pavement plan that I've spoken about, where we're actually taking the allotted areas in the DED to cut up portions and actually creating more unified streets, where we have more home streets that are paved versus chopped up portions. Um, we've got a onsite meeting this Thursday, and expect by the end, middle to the end of next week to have that plan ready for review. Sidewalks and parking, we're working on finalizing the sidewalk design, we completed, togo work on the parking areas a week or so ago, and we'll be working on that, the public parking area design, get, uh, mixed on that. The solar work, uh, job, we received the videos back from GAC for the, for the camera inspection, currently David's actually working on that project, we're actually reviewing those videos now, and trying to compare the damage that they were able to identify on the camera versus what was identified post-storm in the DED, and the expectation coming out of that is we'll have a plan that shows what was identified in the DED versus what was identified in the camera, so we can develop a schedule work to move forward for repair. So, I have all the under on here, my understanding is construction will resume on late seventeen, which is next Monday.
What does that consist of, you say we'll, we'll resume, is that, wh- where are we, you put the water line in?
They milled the road.
Saw that.
Milled the road, so, the next portion of that would be installation of a water main. My assumption is, I didn't get this from the contractors, they were probably waiting on materials to get in, so when they actually start on that water main, it can be done.
Is it on, which side of the road is it on?
The new water main, started last year.
The new line?
The new line.
On that same side, but, but what-
It's more or less, it's gonna be closer, it's, because there's not a big easement through all end.
Right.
It's gonna be under the edge of asphalt on the southern side of the road.
On the south side.
Because the sewer runs down the north side, so we have to keep away from sewer. But they are gonna start at Eighth Street, so there will be a road closure at Eighth Street, because they have to dig up Eighth Street to find the ten inch main, so, we're working on coordinating that now, so.
So, when, when will we, when will we look at shaking that road down there at Eighth Street? Will that be after the water lines in? Don't lose sight of that.
I won't.
That's gotta have some attention, now's the time, only time we get a chance to picture.
I got it on my mind.
Can, Josh, can I ask you also, do you, do you coordinate with the guys that are building that, uh, gas station back? Because the water, most of the water, I think, was coming off their property, wasn't it?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so, do you work with them at all when they start doing that?
I mean, if you guys could arrange a meeting or something like that, so I did it, I'd be more than happy.
Well, in the, in the development order now, I mean, they will have to address that. So, it, it's a little different than the way it was fifteen years ago, when they just-
It was just all on agreement.
Yeah, because that, but I'm in coordination with them and that road would, now's the time to do that.
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
I've got a title on the GED proposal, that's the West GED proposal, the one that was approved at the last council meeting, we're coordinating the survey work at this point, and that was the first part of that scope. The beach landscaping, uh, we're to the point where the base sheet drawings have been created. The expectation is the next ten to fourteen days, we'll have a plan set ready for review and discussion. Once, once that's something that everybody's pleased with, it'll be ready to get out.
Can I, can I interrupt you, Josh? So, is this an architectural or an engineering, or are they designing what plants where, all that kinda stuff?
Right.
Okay, so, I do, I think this would be a good point, a place for me to bring up. You know, uh, on our, uh, welcome center, we, we designed a Taj Mahal that made it really expensive to build. We shouldn't have probably designed a Taj Mahal, and I'm, I'm getting, I'm saying that to say, surely, we're gonna be able to design this that can be replicated, I mean, you don't have to do the overall project, you could actually do where each walkway comes over, you could replicate that so that you wouldn't have to go through and design something funky for each one of those things. I'm just saying, let's be really careful about what kinda money we allot, because we're only getting a certain amount of money from the state DOT. So, I don't wanna spend all the money in design.
We've already proven the design, sixteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand, three hundred or a-
It was thirteen?
Thirteen or fourteen.
So, so we held it down, that's good, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we did hold it down.
All right, good.
Josh, before you leave that, and, and this comes from just not knowing someone asked, when you do a preliminary, uh, design, do you get a preliminary cost?
A estimate will be part of that.
Okay, we'll have, we'll have an estimate-
We'll have an estimate.
So that we don't, we don't go out to bid on something that's eight hundred thousand dollars, and we'll get four, okay. We'll get a preliminary estimate.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
The only other ones, the city standards, we covered that in the previous agenda, so I'll remove that for a minute.
All right, questions for Duberry? David, nice to meet you, welcome aboard.
On, on a citywide street, I know we're gonna try to just put all places that need paving, about, at least pave a little bit of the street, but we're gonna, or we, we are gonna pave the cut throughs that we made in the water lines. Do you, on paving?
Well, the way that my understanding, and that was before my time, we were given a damage description report by FEMA. It was parts of the roadway that they identified as being damaged, so we're given an allotted area that we can repair by them. Now, whether that covers some of the cuts that you're talking about, you know, that'll be a review that we'll have to look at and identify that, but-
They didn't, they didn't take those cuts, it's-
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's that-
I was asking, I was, well, I-
That's that part of the whole thing as well.
That was part of them, okay, that's, that's what I-
Now, that, that we may have gotten lucky, that some of the damage may be so close to it-
We can do it.
Then we can do it, but they didn't consider any of the cuts, quote.
Is that something-
Storm, storm banks.
City, the city's gonna have to do sooner or later.
Sooner or later, I hope we do, I heard they gotta do a quick cut in the roof.
The way it's set up right now, Jerry, it's going like in front of your house, and one in front of this, um, five hundred two in Georgia, then road cuts, and we had to make, repair them more than us, we have ordered perma-packs, it took us a while to get it, we have two complete pallets, and that's what we're starting to go around and start patching in, but we have to let it settle before we can patch it.
I was just wondering if this, is the street paving, when, when they, you know, they're gonna-
Now, if it's, if it's gonna ruin the road, but we had to do something with water sewer, or storm water, that's part of that project, let's go back and patch the road in that strip.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Well, feedback, go slowly in front of your house, session for your dollars.
That's true. Took my speed bump away there, I like the speed bump.
We could, but-
Yeah, we could.
Well, you look, that's why we handle it up a little bit.
Josh, are you done?
Yes, sir.
All right, Maro, you're up.
Yes, sir, um, on the sand bypass, it's a, it's a grant that the city had had years before the hurricane even hit, we've been playing catch-up, and, um, Kimberly's done quite a bit of work to, to coordinate it with MBR, uh, M, I'm sorry, MRD, and Associates, who's the people that, that did that work, and we're getting that put together to send over and get money reimbursed, and I have to get Josh to sign something before he leaves, so please don't leave without signing that. On the townhomes, we circulated the maps that show all the townhome parcels with the planning board in the last meeting, and gave them a, a brief review of it, it will be posted for the next planning board meeting, uh, for the new council member to, to look at, and, uh, with hopes of it passing, and then it'll be before the council for the following meeting, so two meetings from today, you'll, you'll have it for you. Uh, the municipal complex, we've been working with the tower provider for the, um, for the radio tower, they had put together their wish list of where they would like the road and where they would like access easements, we've gotten those drawings over to Duberry, they're gonna look at where they would like the road, and then we're gonna look at where we have the buildings designed, so that we can put a, the temporary road access to that site at the right location, where not, where we're not building a road that just gets filled in later on. They will get their power and their water and gas that needed, you know, from Twenty Second Street, so that will, uh, traverse through that location. As the mayor mentioned, the gas station has been approved, and they've been issued a permit. MBR, uh, Mexico Beach Reef Association, put down some more reefs, I believe it was two weeks ago, and there's another allotment of money that they're gonna be going after, so there'll be a third round of, uh, of reefs to go down. They did, uh, submit some signage, and if you'll swing by my office, they'd like to put some signs that are just informational signs, they'd like to put them at the ends of the beach walkovers on the beach side, if you're all are okay with that, they're, it's a nice looking little sign, uh, it's all their expense, they would just put it down on, on the beach side of that. The beach dude rope, as, as has been mentioned, is, has been doing well. We've had, uh, a whole new series of meetings with upper management within FEMA that has been productive, we're getting some, gaining some headway obligations, so some of these projects does look like it's a week or two out, so we're feeling much better on that, and we've also broken out the architectural engineering, uh, components to that, and that is gonna get obligated in the next week, so that we can design things like the GED and the municipal complex and things, so, that is my update for now.
What about the welcome center?
Yeah.
Where are we with that?
The welcome center is the engineer that, uh, that does the mechanical, is crunching the numbers at the lower roof to see how much we can downsize the, uh, the air conditioning system, and we'll have that out to bid, I was told, by mid to late this week.
Miss Sharon, have you seen a copy of the plans of the welcome center?
I just, I seen them last week, my first time, I thought, I knew about all the councilman, looked for you at the meetings on them.
Have you seen them?
I haven't seen them, I don't know.
I think that'd be something that we know of.
Yeah, Sam?
I didn't see them the last week.
Well, where were you?
That's why I'm going with that.
We rolled them out.
We've, they've, they've been available for going on two months.
I thought, I thought I had walked everybody through the plans that were in my office, so, please forgive me if you have not seen them.
I didn't see them last week.
Well, Maro, my concern is, we're crunching numbers, are we changing the design of the bill?
We're providing an alternate, so that if the price comes in high, we have a way to get it within budget by having alternates. If we want, if you wanna bid out the exact same drugs, if we had, we could do that.
Well, aren't, aren't we doing that with alternates?
With alternates, yes, sir.
We're, we're, but we're bidding at the original building with alternates, which weren't part of the bid the first time, there were no alternates the first time.
That is correct.
So, the alternates will change the look of the bill, is, is that a, yes, or is that correct?
One of the alter, well, we have no, a good number of the alternates have the potential to change the look of the building. One of them is reducing the building height by two feet, another one is changing the windows from continuous glass to just large windows. Another one is taking the metal siding on the west side of the building to hardyboard. Again, they're, they're fairly simple changes, we're not asking for drawings on them, it's strictly a description, it should be on an eight and a half by eleven, alternate one, reduce the building height by two feet, alternate two, hardyboard. The mechanical side of it is where it gets more technical and somebody- The mechanical side of it is where it gets more technical and somebody's gotta print some numbers in order to downsize.
Well, can we, can we, can we ensure that we get, that those hit the street this week? I mean, can, are we comfortable that those, they gonna get us out? I mean, this is, we talked about this, it's our last meeting, and now that by the time it's in, this week, gotta be three weeks that we waited to get something out. Who are we waiting on? DAG?
DAG Architects to get the drugs out, yes, sir. Not drugs out.
Well, can, I'm gonna suggest that we make that a priority to get those on the street this week.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we've got to get something going.
And like-
That's all, that's all I got on that welcome center. Go ahead.
Um, I got a call after our last meeting from James, uh, Taunton, who was actually gonna do the actual construction as a contract, a subcontractor for, uh, North Florida, I, I guess that's who it was. Anyhow, he went over what they had taken out. They, they actually took out a lot of money. He sat down with the electrician, Charlie, with Current Solutions, who does his work, and Charlie finagled and, and changed a lot of stuff. And all this stuff was run by, um, the lady that does the, what's her name? The one that we missed in the meeting, Kimberly. And she approved all the kind of stuff that they were talking about doing. So they took a whole lot of money out of it. Um, and I'm assuming that they'll be able to take even more now. So they did work on it, and, and again, that's what I brought up. We need to be very careful from this point forward, that we don't allow the architect to design something that we really can't afford. And we need to be very, very careful of that. We, we, if, if, if everything was okay and we had a lot of money, it would be a great feather in our cap to have such a beautiful building and, and we had money to spend on it. But we, we're not in that shape, so we need to be very careful. I just, I'm saying that from this point forward, all of our architects need to know, we, we can't afford a Taj Mahal. We don't wanna pigsty, but we want, you know, be, be cognizant of the fact that we're broke, in essence.
I couldn't agree more. And, and had we, not, not this group, but prior, had, that, the welcome center contract was approved, hell, huh. When? I don't even, months and months and months ago.
Yeah, right. A whole different timeframe, a lot of emotional-
At the time, just to sort of follow up on that quickly, there was leading, leading, not misleading, leading us to that decision was FEMA, that those funds would be made available.
Right.
Well, we're finding out, we're much wiser today. Let me just put it that way. We are much wiser today. Uh, what's that movie, Show Me The Money?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's, that's where we'll-
Well said, well said, yeah.
Alright, Mario, what else? Any other questions for Art Mill Street? So, council comments? Bobby?
Okay, I got one. Uh, it's not about math.
Thank you, Bobby.
Um, there's so much talk around about law enforcement's defunding and all this. I got to brag on my law, law enforcement in Mexico Beach.
Amen.
Thank y'all so much. Everybody I've seen does nothing except rag on you. We appreciate you, you got my total support. And don't worry about being defunded. Okay.
Thank you, Bobby.
Sharon, you anything?
I had someone ask me about the, um, canal or whatever it is, right there at Eighth Street, that goes almost to the beach. Sometimes it goes all the way to the beach and empties into the beach, sometimes it doesn't. What's the story on that? Is it supposed to be kept open? Is that water going to be redirected sometime, or what is, what is the-
I'll, I'll give you the short version. That, that is our ma-, that is, at the current time, our, our main drainage canal for the whole north side of the city. We have to go down when it doesn't open itself from rain. When it doesn't punch a hole by just back pressure, we have to send someone down there and open it up to relieve the north side of the city for, for drainage purposes. It is not designed to stay open year, it's not something we maintain.
Okay.
It is nothing more than a, I guess, a relief valve.
Okay.
And we are fighting and have been for years to try to redirect that dark water, so it doesn't go in the gutter. And that's part of this master drainage plan, is to try to get that closed and redirect that water. Does that-
Okay.
Does that help you?
That answers my question.
There you go. Alright, Derek?
I'm good.
Really? Wait a minute.
What'd you say?
I'm good, I don't have nothing to say.
Bobby, you took it out of it. See what you did to your father. I, hey, I know, I know how that, but I, I, uh, and I'm proud of this council, uh, to agree this correctly. That's just pretty, I mean, I, we all have our differences and, and the day it shows, and I, I'm, I'm proud of every one of us. We have a working council, I think, that's good for the city. Uh, and all our departments really deserve a, a, a applause, a pat on the back. They really have, this city's growing and it's going in the right direction, and I think we're gonna make a big goal in our, all our city workers really have a job.
All the way down to here.
Nick's-
Nick, I hope you, I hope you feel good about that. You don't, you don't get much of that. I'm passing. Most for Jerry.
Oh, just so moved.
Alright, everybody knows we got a budget workshop, ten minutes. How long it takes to set up, Mo, Nick?
I'm gonna walk.
Fifteen minutes? Well said, Nick, well said.